We'll go ahead and get started. Appreciate everybody being here. This is kind of three committees and one, that's why we just did a special council meeting and we'll go from there. First thing we're going to get to is the Tower Park tennis court restoration. We've discussed this multiple times, kind of segmented, so I just kind of want to give council an overview. We received bids to re-stripe and resurface, meaning just the paint and crack repair for the six tennis courts at Tower Park. In last year's budget, council approved $150,000 to redo the surface and to put new fencing in. However, when we got the bids in for the tennis courts, they all went higher. So our initial bid, or the initial court I got, the same person actually increased it over $30,000. So the cheapest one that we could actually do this year was $78,000. And after talking to one of the bidding companies who bid, he actually didn't bid on the resurfacing, he actually bid on improving the whole courts and adding two inches of asphalt. I met with the mayor, I met with Bryan Robinson, since they use this course too onsite, and we all determined that $78,000 was just going to get us another three to five years if that. My goal was to spend $50,000, which was my original quote, just to get us to the next five years to be able to resurface then. So instead of spending $78,000, we decided to just reject all the bids and kind of take a look at doing it for a long-term fix, because they are in pretty bad shape. So that's kind of where, how we got here today. As you remember, we bid out paving a trail through the woods back, I think last year or earlier, I'm trying to think what month I'm in, but I think it was earlier this year. Again, the bids came in too high, didn't want to move forward, it was like $90,000 to do that trail. So after talking to some of the contractors that did bid on this and CT, I decided I think we're going to do much better if we do this as a package deal for one, and I want to do a more of a permanent fix for these tennis courts to really get us out a couple, 10, 20 years at least in the resurfacing of it, and then all I have to do is maintain the surface and stripes and stuff. So I do have this printout in front of you, and I'll just go kind of line by line what we're looking at to propose, and then we'll discuss direction moving forward. So this is part of the obviously Recreation Committee. So the red line, that's the paving project around the woods. It's a five to six-foot asphalt path that's going to be in the woods for the tennis courts. It's a quarter of a mile, we talked about this before. I'm estimating $80,000. I think that's a little high, just because we are, the Public Works is planning this fall to actually grow up the whole area, which will save us a lot of money, because I think it was, I don't know, close to $20,000 just for a company to come in and do that. So for us to be able to, we're going to get a contractor to help Public Works, but we're going to go ahead and make that five to six-foot path, just to save us a little bit of money and prep work. So Tim from Public Works thinks that's going to save us a lot on that project. And then what we'll have to do is just, they'll have to come in, put gravel down and asphalt it. So we've got that estimated about $80,000, which I think, you know, that definitely gives us padding, some people can get in closer to 70, but we'll see how it is, just with the bids coming in, it's been a little bit challenging. I did talk to the tennis court people, and they said this would fit into their scope, so they would be able to do that as well as the tennis courts all at the same time. So it should save us some money and make the job a little bit bigger and more enticing for people to do. If you see the blue line, that is the pathway, that's currently to tennis courts and the lower tennis courts. Have you been on lately? It's pretty rough. Additionally, that, if you see that second blue line there to the right, that's the hill. If people are familiar with that, I know we received a couple complaints lately just about it's challenging to get down to the lower courts. Part of this project is to make that actually concrete and add a rail. So that way, it'll still be steep, but it'll be, the concrete will be better, and then the railing of course will be helpful for people to come up and down. So that project is to repave from the parking lot sidewalk all the way down to the lower courts and then to the gates. So it'll mill down and add asphalt to that whole area to make that look nice as well.
Did you have any discussion about putting in, you know, not steps, but you know, you step down if you're kind of, you know, getting that? It's really hard on the, I've got knee issues and I go down there, it's really hard on my knees.
Yeah, we've looked at a couple different options. The biggest problem is when we add to the base of where the ramp goes down, when we add to that, then we're starting to add drainage issues to the courts, because it'll push more water and pool down there on the corner. So that's still, we're still kind of discussing different ways to do it, but the concrete is kind of where we ended at the moment. And I don't think there's enough drop to be able to put like ADA type linkings in it, but...
Like the right side, like less, like if you're looking at it going down the hill?
Hmm.
That right side, like less gradual than hill, do you do some sort of cap on that side, so the right side will just...
Yeah, if you look between the two courts, if you see those benches that are at the center, that's a pretty significant drop right into that. It's definitely, it's definitely something we'd like to lessen that ramp, and if we can, we will, but I don't know if we can do anything really significant without impacting, or without building a wall on the corner of that and impacting the rest of the courts. But if the committee wants to, wants us to look at that a little bit more, it would definitely increase the cost, but it might be something we can, we can do.
How wide is that path? Or how wide could it be?
Probably six foot, five and six foot.
If you do half of it as a ramp and half of it as steps for that?
I mean, we can do steps. It'll be, it'll increase the cost.
Yeah. If you do the steps on the outside?
Steps are steps better than a ramp.
When you say ramp?
Just, I just mean the path, the paths that's there.
Yeah, just because, I think so, just because of the incline of the path, it's still steep.
I think I can adjust them right on. You can do both.
Well, if we did, it fitted the other...
All of them, okay.
You can widen it a little bit, you know, the six foot. And when you put the steps on the outside, it wouldn't really affect the drainage.
Okay.
I already talked to a mall, or a lot of these places, they have both the ramp and the steps, so obviously there's something to that. Even if it's like two or three steps that are really raw and steps.
That's probably all you're going to need, is go down and step it down.
Okay.
Maybe put the rail between the steps and the ramp, and that way people walking on either one, using the rail and going in.
Put a rail right there. That's what it is.
All right, we will...
I think the cost wouldn't be this significant compared to the overall project.
We try.
It's like that one.
Yeah. Should be.
Okay. Well, this is what you're grabbing the microphone off the rack there for you to say. Okay, so that's the, $45,000 is what I have estimated for that. We actually did get bid for that this year, earlier this year, partly a bid that we were rejecting, so those numbers should be pretty good. And then we'll see what the steps will increase that. And then the orange line, that is just the existing original fencing, so that needs to be replaced. That needs to be replaced. We, I do have a quote from mills from earlier this year for a little over $100,000, so assuming some of the price may go up, that will also have to be bid as part of the package, but we're just estimating it as 120 for that and to make sure that we have all the entrances and gates proper for that. And then the last amount is the highlighted green, and that's to actually repave the courts, so it's put a two-inch, they'll grind down and fix some of the cracks, and then add two inches of asphalt over all six courts. And then they'll include new posts if necessary. Our nets are new, but if they're, at that point, when we do this, if they need to be replaced, they'll be replaced. And then we have light poles that still need to be painted around. So the lights on top of the light poles are brand new, they're LEDs, but the poles themselves are the original, and they go pretty rough. So that amount is also to make sure we get those painted during this whole project. The benefit of adding this out is, one, is that they can remove the fencing and do the asphalt a lot easier, and then add the fencing after effect. So it will be a little bit more efficient that way, and it should lower our cost. As you know, Tower Park is about complete. I mean, everything is pretty new, except for this area, which is why I'm recommending, instead of us piecemeal on it like originally, we were hoping to do and not be as expensive. I think it's best if we're going to do it to go ahead and do the full project now. The goal, and what staff would recommend, is to bid this out in January, that'll get all of the companies' project that'll start in one June. So that way, they'll kind of lock it in. These companies like to get their summers and springs set. So this, hopefully we'll get a better pricing if we bid it out in June, sorry, January. June 1st, the reason we picked that date is that's after tennis season for Highlands, so we won't have to worry about messing that. When this happens, if we start June 1st, the courts will probably be out of commission for about two months, because even after they do the asphalt, it has to, just like the pickleball courts, it has to sit for 30 days before they can surface it. So they will be, they will be out of service for that long, which is why we wanted to bid it out in January and then start with one June, and that way we can do it through that season.
Is there a later season? Because I know there's a July 4th tournament.
I'm not sure. I've been just talking to the schools, they were recommending June 1st, because everything, they said all the tournaments and stuff end in May.
If there's an option for a later start after that, I know that that, when we work through the tennis courts before, the July 4th tournament is a pretty heavily used tournament amongst the tennis community, so they might want to, I think they might want to think about that as well.
And it's a fall use, so maybe start it July 5th, and then go through August. I don't know how soon they start using it, but I'm not sure in the fall.
Kat, is there anything you want to add?
We have camp, and then we have the pickleball and 4th of July tennis tournament.
All at that time?
All on July 4th, yeah.
Okay. What about after, July 4th?
No.
Pretty soon?
Yeah, till Memorial Day, or Labor Day.
Seems like pretty good.
Okay.
Does the school kick in to pay the costs at all?
No, they have a lease on it, but they don't have any, anything for that.
How much do they pay?
It's minimal. I mean, that's something we're going to be really looking at, I think it's $2,000 a year. I mean, they all use it for, from February to May is when it is, so...
Did they kick them, I think they kicked them on last resurface. I thought they did. Which wasn't that long ago.
I know. It was right before I got here.
In regards to the fencing and the courts themselves, one of the bids you're soliciting from the same folks who did the course at Hunter Park Football?
Sure, I mean, that's, well, obviously one regular to bid on them, because I think they're good with one, yeah. Yeah, because I think they did a good job down there, so I'm hoping that they're interested in bidding this out. The, you know, the difference is, that's, you know, they do asphalt and then they contract the rest of that out, so we'll see what the actual tennis court groups who kind of do this and then bid out their asphalt. So hopefully we'll get a little bit more bids, because I got three bids last time.
Are we allowed to proactively reach out to companies?
Sure, I do that every time. When we do bid, I try to send the bid packet to as many companies as we can. You don't have to do that, but it's always best.
Mostly if they have to come to us.
No, as long as it's not, as long as the bid isn't written, so it just angles one company. But no, I try to send that out. I mean, literally for this one, I went down Google and just hit up every tennis company from, you know, here to Dayton to Lexington, which is why I got an extra bid out of doing that, a company that, the one that I actually talked to about resurfacing, they would probably wouldn't have known about it. Yeah, we try to do that. So that's the project, I just wanted to see what council's opinion is on that. I do want to get approval, you know, move forward, so we know we can bid it out, this will be a part of next year's budget technically for spending, but I don't want to bid something out and then accept a bid without council's approval for it.
Are the cracks that are happening, they're pretty significant. Are they happening in the same spot every time?
Pretty much. They mean that, yeah, they're going to continue, continue to happen in spots, which is why they'll do kind of a repair of that before they, before they're...
I'm assuming it's because they have a little shift going downhill, is there a way we can shore that up as we're spending?
I don't think it's because of that, because a lot of them are between courts, and actually between the two courts is where the most significance are, between the two double courts, you know what I mean?
Yeah, right in the middle.
So, right. So that's where most of the cracking is.
But you can tell a lot of the cracking is where they did the repair last time.
Yeah.
You can see the tape and then it's split right down. So it's kind of like, why are we going to spend $8,000 to do the same thing and have it split again a couple years later? So I think it's better to start.
But even if we start over, is there a reason under the courts that's making them crack in the same spot?
It's not that kind of cracking, it's very, it's very small crack. So it doesn't look like it's a subsurface problem. But I think what they do is they'll grind some of it down and figure it out.
Yeah, they can start to figure it out. Right. How long those courts? That's what I'm betting.
Before the 70s, I think.
They down pretty far, imagine they'll get pretty high, I mean, that's, they've been settled for a long time. I love the, I love the trailer on the outside, I think it's great to give people access to the words I can't call it, probably get access.
Right.
I would just assume that you, this is the route that has the least amount of topographical issues, right? Instead of going to build a lot of tape and all this stuff.
Right, yeah. The point, this is not going to be ADA accessible, because it will not be by definition.
By definition?
Because we would have to add railing and do some more, but it will make it easier for people to be on it. And the instruction I gave them is, you know, let's not be, when I say six foot is the goal, right? It doesn't mean it has to be six foot everywhere, because if that means we can save a tree and not tear one out, as long as it's between five and six foot is kind of the direction I gave them. You know, let's be realistic, let's get it around, let's not spend, you know, an extra $20,000 just because of one 10-foot section. So that's, that's been the goal. So it's not going to be impacting anything, no walls are going to be put in. It won't be specifically ADA accessible mainly due to the southeast part of it, but it's still going to be a nice path, and it'll still be great for strollers and people that want to be in the woods, but the uneven ground is a little difficult for them.
You've got to be careful with our parks or in Kings Island. Get pretty good on there.
You know, are we going to allow, you know, bikes and scooters on that path? I'm sure we are.
Sure, yeah.
Regular, yeah, okay. And potentially somebody who is handicapped could access it, it's just not 40 feet, they can.
Right, yeah, it would require handrails and platforms and stuff, and I just think that's a little outside the scope of what's necessary for it.
That will be an application on the nation.
Yeah, I mean, approximately, yeah.
Do you think there's a lot of scooters on those, motorized scooters on our paths? You know, a lot of different on it.
I just don't know how they're going to regularly.
There's a lot of beds, a lot of turns, a lot of families walking back to the strollers and kids.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So I guess we can address it if...
If we need, and we put signs up, it's just a whole enforcement thing of...
I mean, we have signs to give up.
Right, yeah.
That is a lot in there.
And then if you look at the bottom left on here, that is adding that side, that path and sidewalk essentially that isn't there right now, because right now that, that trail kind of dumps into a yard, so that is, that adds a little bit of money, but I think it's worth making that full connection up there. And that'll be concrete and not asphalt.
We can actually do that lower, playground.
All right. So anything outside of the woods is going to be concrete for that path, and everything inside is just going to be asphalt, just for aesthetic. Any questions on this project, any concerns that we don't want to do this, or I think it'll be, I think it'll be good to get this, this will be the final thing for Tower Park and move forward, it'll just be maintenance. And a part of this is the annual inspections from a tennis company to inspect this, to see, that way we can start into crack, they can address that much quicker than waiting every five years, so that is a big part of this planned move forward, is to make sure it's thoroughly inspected every year, and then we just do annual maintenance as needed for it.
If it's costing us $80,000 plus every couple of years to fix it, this is a long-term investment, it probably will pay off.
Right, and, yeah, the normal, the normal paving is, or the normal surfacing should be between 50, 70 max thousand, especially when we have it brand new, so it'll be, you know, it'll start, it'll be cheaper that first five years, and then it'll gradually increase just with more cracking, more use, things like that.
Just a thought I had about, specific to the trail, not the course, you know, you see it back there all the time, depending on the topography and the drainage, that asphalt is prone to damage over time, could wash out, could crack, et cetera. So I just want to make sure, whoever does, if the contractors want to know what they're doing, they're going to have a proper subsurface. When it does need repairs, is that something that we, I guess, specific to the trail on the court, is that something you would go back to the contract or to Public Works?
Public Works will handle it. Yeah, once the base and everything is down after that, it's just small sections that they can, that they can do and with our roller and everything, so that, but right now, get in the base and that first, that first path down, because it'll, it'll take a smaller machine than a typical asphalt machine, so it's a little bit more specialized for the pathways, which is why it's good to add the pathways to the tennis courts with the same bid for it in the woods. Any concerns from Recreation Department on that? It's good to move forward. I'll follow up on some of the points that you guys brought up, and then I'll brief that at a council meeting, and then just ask for, I'll ask for a budget amendment, even though we know we're not that extended, but I want something voted on, just so I know that I can move forward with a bid and accept it. For that, because that's good with everything.
I think it's a good use of mine. The courts are used a lot.
They are.
All the way throughout the year, a lot of community involvement. When we talk about the courts, that we need to put a little money up front to make them nice, make them safe, and long-term cost will be reduced. I am, I will make a motion to approve the funds for the, all the set improvements.
Yeah, let me, let me work on the steps and stuff, just in case that changes a little bit, if we could.
Can we, can we approve now and then build in a buffer for you?
I'd rather, I'd rather, we've got time, so I'd rather just move forward. I mainly just wanted to see if anybody was against, against doing this project, because I, again, I don't really need the money right now, but I do want a motion to approve once we get it ready for bid, so.
Do you want to bring it back to council as a whole?
All right, yeah, that's what I would do, that's good with everything.
Are the lower courts still going to be locked with the goal?
Absolutely.
I assume, I hate to assume.
No, it's in here, I wrote that in here, just because I want...
I mean, not the ones that are going to be used, you know, it takes some weight off of the people who feel comfortable with impacted sides.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's, that got read done earlier this year, or late last year, yep, that will stay.
I had a lot of questions about that last night, I had a couple years ago.
All right, we'll move forward to some, I wanted to capture some overall park update, since I've got a committee here. Highland Hills Playground is what I'm working on right now to get some estimates from. In the, when we discussed this during budgeting time, I had $400,000 into the budget for the playground equipment. I'm looking for about $300,000 right now is kind of what I'm looking at for the actual playground, so I'm hoping to keep it under what we had previously talked about, and I talked to a couple groups. I plan on breaking this into two different areas. One area will be for all ages with swings, and the other area will be focused more on two to five year olds. So if you look here, at the top, on the top left, Shelter, the goal is to be able to put, in that area, we'll be able to put one section of playground equipment, and then another section down to the right of the bathroom is where we've drawn up at the moment.
Top left, yeah.
So just to kind of zoom in a little bit. The left picture is in front of that shelter that overlooks the ball field, and then the one on the right here is between the bathroom and the shelter that's...
Between the bathroom and the shelter?
Between the bathroom and the one to the, to the right, in the image, right? So you can see, yeah.
Who's changing which?
Not sure yet, I mean, we're, we're looking probably to the one closer to the bathroom is going to be two to five, but I also, I met with a group this past week who actually had just one area, all swings, and then the other area, both, which made it, give us a little bit more space, because swings take a lot of safety area up. So it's just, it's really just playing, you know, Tetris on it to see what makes sense. So I don't have, I don't have perfect drawings yet, but I, but I wanted to just kind of show council a couple of views again, just to make sure that I'm on, I'm on track, so I'm not wasting time moving forward.
Yeah, the only concern to me is this is separated with two age groups that far away with parents.
Right, and that's...
I just, a lot of parents that have, you know, I love that they're moving across the street so that they don't have, they don't have to walk the whole group of kids to the bathroom, you know what I mean? I've heard that before up there, like, we have to take all two kids or three kids to the bathroom and walk, you can't leave one over there. Even on the other side, that's pretty significant. You know what I mean? So, and you guys have kids, I don't, but that's one of the concerns I think I see, but...
Yeah, and the latest design, the last group I met with was putting both, up by it in front of the shelter, was putting both there, and then doing the other area just swings, which I think is, probably is going to end up being the right way.
So the other swings with more than all kids and less than two?
Right. I mean, it'll still have a smaller swing there as well, but it'll, it'll just be spread out a little bit.
Is the topography such that the swings could be right next to the shelter rather than next to the bathroom?
No, it's, yeah, the topography's too steep.
Is there any concern with renting the shelters because the people have rentals and a lot of players, or would that be a bonus?
Yeah, it's probably 50/50.
Right, about that's what I talked about.
Right, yeah.
Makes it more attractive for some people to have it if they have a kid's parky with something right in front where they can watch. We don't have any of that.
Right, so, and again, this is all preliminary, you know, this might morph a little bit, but I just want council to take a look at what we're looking at here, if I'm way off guard, or it's too, too small. I don't want to make it a huge park, I don't want it to be a destination, I do want it to be there for people that are either already there for other events or just smaller kids, just something a little lower intensity than Tower Park is kind of what I was going for in here.
Like all the parks outside of Tower Park?
My suggestion would be putting the older parts down, our baseball fields, because one of their games, like my cousin's, like kids that are nine, they're always picking down there for, you know, the little ones, not huge yet, but I just see the big kids running. Yes.
Okay, yeah, well, so, once we meet with a couple more, I'm still waiting on some updated drawings for it, even though, we'll kind of go, go from there. The pricing is, is better than I was initially thinking, and we are going to do the multicolored, we are going to keep with greens, browns, and probably some blue highlights throughout, just to...
Do they purposely have equipment like re-smarter?
Yeah, it's stated. And then, yeah, so, part of that is, you know, once we have that completed, where the skate park was proposed, which we're still, you know, well over a year out from even getting approved for that, that equipment at some point will be removed and either, you know, repurposed as a skate park, or we'll find, you know, other amenities to put there if that doesn't turn out.
People like that, what's that little, the ball game they play, the little...
Bocce ball.
Not bocce.
Gaga, sorry.
Yeah, we get his own, that's going to stay somewhere.
Yeah, well, it'll stay somewhere.
I would suggest that once the new play areas are built, we give that old stuff sooner than later, because it's kind of a, you get one all the time, and it's not treacherous, but it's going to just get worse.
Correct, yeah, that's the goal, I just, I don't, I'm not going to rip it out until the news, the news is in.
Have we, are we complete on the first big golf stuff that was going up there?
We have not, that's, that's, there's still a plan to expand that, but we haven't had much interaction from the people that were pushing to do it.
In the current, re-created, current stuff, for the current nine, we put new pads and new nets, is that correct over the last couple of years?
Not a lot, actually, the thought process was that we would, when we reconstruct the course, we would bring hole one down by pickleball courts to kind of distribute the parking. Because right now they park kind of up top and it's not a lot of parking, so now we have more parking down there. The main thought process was to put hole one down there to start people and initiate those down there. And then we have a really good group of folks that are willing to help and do some work. We were thinking about putting paper pads back in, in there instead of concrete back in the woods, just for accessibility, more like a paper pad. Just so we can do it a little more function, functional.
Do you need to, to reach back out, I was actually going to talk to somebody about it on Friday.
One thing, I was going to put it in my budget process to talk with administratively in, in February of, do we want to add this to the budget for next year and how so? And my talks were going to probably start in January, it doesn't work. So, I'll reach out to a couple of guys, I had some contacts and I was intending on doing that here.
Probably the same people.
Is part of that going from nine to eighteen or what, like adding more?
I don't think we were going to add more, we were just going to change it a little bit, there's not enough room. They wanted to go through the woods, they actually cleared out one of the holes to see what that looked like, got rid of all the honeysuckle, didn't really clear out any trees. And so, there's some neat concepts and I think it's just a matter of coordinating it, committing to it and moving forward and how we're going to move forward. It's going to be their work, our work, both together, we know exactly how it's going to happen. So, I think that's, like I said, we're going to initiate that in January.
Yeah, I used to play, when I lived in San Diego once in a while, and they had a really cool concept there where they had different tee boxes. Of course, they'd get mine, some golf courses have a separate tee box in the back, right, through a few holes, so maybe a different starting point. Or, or you can, another thing you can do on top of that is move the bin, so it's like, you know, hole one, hole, you know, A, B, C, they're in B placement now. Because all you do is pick it up and put it into a post and you change the course for them. So, I think people probably don't like a course they play it so much, so they get bored with it, if you're the same, so adjusting it for very little, just a thought.
No, that was actually something one of the guys brought up, is to have a couple of different placements and actually maybe use our old, the ones that are currently there, use those for like a short course. So, you essentially on each hole, you have two, one for like amateurs and one for pros or, you know, more seasoned disc golfers. So, you might have as many as two on each hole where you could kind of go to either one or, and have more variety, like you said, another spot also that you can maybe tweak it. And honestly, kind of like the pickleballers, maybe let them tweak them and, and have some arrangement with some of those guys that they're passionate about.
Is there, I mean, room to add holes through the wood?
We, we have a couple of concepts out there and there is kind of an idea to, not, once again, not add, but move. And so, yes, there is, below the baseball field, there's a couple of ideas on how to do that. One, to maybe build a bridge to go across the creek on the lower side of the path as you go down from James. And there's a nice big flat area back there. Once again, a couple of different concepts, so yes, there is enough room to do something.
Be a short course if we put eighteen in, wouldn't it?
Well, once again, it would be still nine holes, it would just be done a little bit differently. You know, instead of having the, the two holes up along the road on the other side of the opposite baseball field, put another hole down in the woods, a little bit differently and bring it around to the lower side of the dome park.
Cool. Alright, next thing would be just to give kind of an update on pickleball courts at Highland Hills, they're, it's going well. We've, I've met with the community down there. We will be adding, Public Works this fall will be adding sidewalk connections to each gate because we have two gates that aren't. And that's creating, people are still using the gate, but it's getting muddled on the course, so Public Works is going to be working on that. And then we added a portal left down there, I believe already. And we'll, we'll start looking at that to make it more of a permanent housing because we're probably going to keep it, even though we know the bathroom is up to the hill, but that's, that's a pretty far walk for, for everybody down there. We've got about four to five benches that we're adding around on the pathway right in front of the pickleball courts. That way, people that are waiting can, can wait on the benches and not just in the grass and stuff. We have added a trash can down there and again, we'll, we'll kind of monitor that to figure out what the permanent solution is to that location. There's also some internal fencing and ball catches that we're going to be adding in here moving forward and we're working with, with them to find the best solution for that. The last.
What about thoughts on a waiting area that's covered down there?
We're, we'll look at that for next year's budget, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to add any, any shade at the moment. They did ask if they could pay for a shade that they can hang on the tops and I, you know, I told them I was open to that, but not to do anything without getting approval from the city. Just to make sure it's not person structure or anything.
Or the courts?
Just where, where the main entrance is, there's like a triangle there, if you look at the main posts. And they were talking about putting something over that, which I told them I'm not opposed to, but I want to make sure it's not, you know, if that compromised the fencing or anything. Because I think anytime you hang something on the fence, whether it's signs or anything, it can definitely damage the fence over time. So, just want to make sure it's done properly.
We got a building quarter around that border body down there?
Right, that'll be the long-term goal, we just want to position it now and just see where it makes sense. So, but, but it won't be this year, most likely.
Is the water running or is that a budget issue down there?
No water, we got no electric or, or water down there. We have it prepped for electric, but we didn't want to do it. Right.
Is there no water at all anywhere near there or is that what it's something?
I mean, there's a water pump up on top of the hill. Yeah. Alright, just a one kind of update on rigs, Memorial Park, will be, once we get Highland Park, you know, planned out and bid out, then we'll, we'll move to that part. Just so our council knows that that's going to be the next on the agenda to upgrade that. Was that my squawk, one? I think so.
Are you thinking of buying, those stuff will be done as a K or will be done by like next summer? Or will this be a project for all next year?
I mean, my, my goal would be, how we normally will do it is this year I was doing planning and I'll have it bid in for next year's budget. If I get everything worked out and council wants to move before July first, you know, it's definitely an option. But I don't, I don't typically like to keep asking for budget amendments. But again, if that's something council is interested in, I will probably be ready by the spring, if that's something we wanted to do ahead of time. Alright, I think that's it for, oh, no. We are starting to look into a possibility of a new park and none of this is in stone. It's down by River Road, or it's down on old Route Eight, it's. Good, it's right under View Pass, going under the underpass. There's an area there, we, we have it there as Coal Haven Park, the reason is, is CSX used to call that overpass, used to be called Coal Haven. Because I guess it's where they had a stockpile of coal, so it just seemed like a, a cool name. But what we're looking here is, I kind of got the idea when I was, I was riding down in Dayton, because they have some areas there where you can sit and kind of look to river and it's a really nice area. So, I did a little looking down there and it is actually really nice down there. It's a really great entrance for kayaks, so I've kayaked from there before. It's, it's a really gradual entry compared to where I usually kayak down under the two seventy-five bridge, which is a, I have to slide my kayaks down and hope they don't get into the water before I do. So, this is a really nice area. So, right now, we're just looking to do some very simple, and you can just see the, kind of what it looks like. So, it's, it's actually a really nice area down there, which is.
Do the icebreakers form right there?
Yes, you can.
Is this the area that we?
Yeah, they're, they're up there. I don't know, I wasn't here years ago, so.
It's the bottom, where is it located?
It's right, it's right past the icebreaks, which I just figured out those are icebreaks two months ago, I never knew, I thought they were.
At the bottom of Tower Hill in Genoa?
It's pretty, it's pretty much at the bottom of Tower Hill, but it's, the reason this works is because you don't have to cross the railroad tracks, right? Because everywhere else, that's always been my hesitation to even look at is because you're, you're having pedestrians cross wherever tracks, which I think is not safe. But this is that area where when you're going in the underpass, the tracks are on the left side of the road. And it really, it really is pretty. So, I just want to start this off, it's a very low cost, Public Works is going to clear out about fifty feet of just scrub in that area. So, you'll be able to see it from the road, you'll be able to see the river from the road. Because it's got some really nice growth there, but it's just filled with honeysuckle and everything. So, this fall, just kind of one of their side jobs is they're going to, they're going to clear that out. They're going to improve the riverbank a little bit just to make it a little nicer, get a nice path down there. The goal would be to take some of our old benches and put them up by the road, they'll improve that pull-off. You can see that pull-off here in the bottom left. They'll, they'll improve that just, again, temporary, it'll probably be gravel, we'll probably paint lines on it just to get some parking spots. It'll, it'll, it'll be bigger than what's shown there. I just kind of want the council to see where, exactly where I'm talking. And, and just see how it goes for this first year, I want to monitor the, the river levels. It doesn't look, it's kind of nice if you do walk down there, there's already a little path. It's kind of three shelves and it doesn't look like it really gets much higher than that second shelf ever, if you look at the roof. So, it's actually, it actually doesn't flood as much as you would think in that area. So, we're just trying to kind of keep it simple right now, throw some benches down there just as a pull-off and overview to, you know, eat lunch or just, just see. Make sure it doesn't turn into any kind of, you know, police issue before we do anything more significant. And then in the spring, if things are working out, then we can talk about doing a floating kayak ramp or dock and things like that, which are pretty, again, it's pretty low cost. And it'll rise and with, with the river, so it'll, the maintenance won't be as, as bad either. But I just want council to kind of be aware of that and see if there's any issues with it. We're kind of just starting off pretty low cost and I think that's, makes sense for this area.
If you want me to check this out, so if you go down Tower Hill Road to hit old Route Eight, turn left, do you go under the overpass?
Yes.
And then it's on the right?
Correct.
About how far from the overpass?
A few hundred yards, a few hundred, yeah, a few hundred yards.
Well, what you have marked there, the original plan was to do kind of a boat ramp where the creek that comes down Tower Hill.
Okay.
Off to the side there, so while what you have marked blue is high on Hill Road, you call it a hole there.
Much better, I was saying two seventy-five.
That you could launch your kayak or whatever at the bottom of the greens and then go out another road.
Okay.
So, have a look at that one down there.
Yeah, we, we talked about, years ago, we talked about putting a kayak ramp over by two seventy-five where you can access, you can walk down the parts of Tower Park and access the city area down there. And also having a kayak launch. I don't know, we own that, right, or is that?
We own some of it, but again, you'd have to cross tracks to get there and the topography down there is pretty steep compared to here.
And then the bottom, the other part was moving it up to where the food truck is, I don't know if that's now.
Oh, okay.
So, Jose, I'm sure he would be, um, discussed, because that's our, all that's our.
Yeah, that's not important, honestly.
Correct, but working with Silver Grove on some options.
But the thought would be you can put in at one and then take out on the other.
Yeah.
That's a good, I have, I won a day by, has it, it's got a creek that comes down and it's formed a little pool right there because it's formed all those rocks push around. So, when you go down where the old restaurant was, you know, perfect, because there's no current in there. I was racking my brain to figure out where you were going, you said underpants, underpants, I didn't realize we were that far over. Yeah, because I've always been leery of putting something on the other side of the railroad tracks due to the fact that that, that's all marshland down there, right? This area as it goes closer to the riverside area, it's much better.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, if you go down here and you can walk it, it's not, it's not treacherous, it's really nice and, and the view is really, it's a really pretty view. So, I think it's a, it's a low-cost option and give us another, another area and we'll just see how it goes.
Yeah, it's a great test.
Yes. Alright, so that is it for Recreation Department. The street light would be utilities. And then we'll. There'll be Mr. Strange, chairman. So, this is the current, we finally got the current numbers for the LED program. The total cost is six hundred thirty-six thousand, that's four hundred forty-one dollars, four, four hundred forty-one thousand per Cobra heads. And those are the one at the top and the one on the left of what that's going to look like and it was just over the street. And then the one to the right, it'll be something like that, those are the post tops, which is a hundred ninety-five thousand to go ahead and swap all those out in the city. So, just to let council know and those are the prices. Those prices can be paid upfront and then I think it's eight to ten year is when we'll make our money back on the utility savings is what they're projecting. Council options, if we do choose to do this now, is to do a three K or a four K. The three K's got a little bit of an orange hue and the four K is more white and a little bit brighter. Staff recommendation, if we would move forward with this, is to do the three K's in the, on the residential streets and then keep the four K's on the main routes, like Four Thomas Avenue, Island Avenue and Grand Avenue. Just it'll give you guys a little bit brighter view. Right now, as you know, we've got a few of these in town, because when they go and replace a, whatever, whatever brand, whatever it is now. When they can't fix it, they replace it with an LED. So, that's what's happening now, the only difference is when they replace it with the LED, you know, it takes a couple of months for them to kind of give us a pricing for the LED. So, it's not actual utility cost, it's, you know, whatever type it is, it's just a flat rate for each, for each light post. This is one that.
Say that again, what's that?
So, they just do a flat rate for each pole as opposed to like the actual utility cost, does that make sense?
When they replace?
So, when they replace it, they, they notify and then it, you know, takes a couple of months and then they start charging us for an LED light on that one. But there's, that, you know, is doing that over time. So, they will be, you know, at some point, these will all be replaced in the next twenty years for sure in the city. And this is just the option to, to go ahead and do it now.
You said they started charging us for the LED, does that mean that there's not a, they don't know the actual draw from that light, they're just assuming?
Yeah, I mean, there's not a, there's not an actual cost, but I guess they have just a standard cost with that light cost compared to others. See, this is on Grand Street, there's actually a three K there, so you can kind of see the, the color difference for that one, that's a three K. And if you look down the street, you can see the old light, just, you know, how this one, the LED is, is much brighter, it takes, it pulls out a lot more in that area. So, just for another example of.
That's a four K down there at the top?
That's a three, that's a three K, I do, I do not have a post top. Yeah, there's a lot of options for the LED, so it really depends on which ones we choose.
The far one is a three K?
No, the far one is just the standard, or whatever they call it.
Yeah, the old, the old.
The old style.
It's more of a white effect, right?
And then, and then this is the three K one here?
Right.
Four K one looks nicer. Is there a difference in the energy savings between three and four K?
No.
I like, I like, I'm, so I, I own a convenience store, liquor store, I'm a big believer in the wider, the white stuff just because it makes the items pop, produce, you know, drinks, stuff like that. It just makes streets look nicer, I would assume, and to say.
You know, I think that's the thought process that from our recommendation to keep those along the main drags. The issue once you get into the residential neighborhoods is they're a little bit brighter and more impactful. To potentially turn that down to the three K, that it's in the residential neighborhoods shining into windows and things of that nature was the thought process. We do get complaints when, just, just simply when a light is changed currently. If it's, if it's a brighter light over time, all of a sudden it fades and then they, they put a new light there, whether it's LED or not, and all of a sudden they want a shade on them. So, nothing's really changed in those instances, it's just that it's a bright, new bright light. So, that's the concern on the residential streets.
My, my thought is that they're going to complain regardless, like with the three K or four K and, you know, I mean, when we change, we change a regular light bulb out and we put a new light bulb in, they claim. So, if we put a four K or a three K in, they're still going to complain. I, I changed my entire, I had LEDs in my store and I changed them all out like four years ago. And I remember walking into my store the first day, going, oh, this is, this is a lot, you know, I mean, like I went, and then by day five, I loved it and didn't notice a difference. So, I figured with the mandate office would be the time to do it and it, you know, I mean. mean, I just, I know there's a difference between the old yellow and the new white. I know, I know the, how much nicer it makes everything look, but, you know, it's still true.
So to that point, one thing that, we had a couple residents, one of them in particular, that they changed it to an LED, and it was a 3K. I said, "Hey, how about you be our guinea pig, and just kind of wait it out, see how it feels after a month?" I was kind of thinking the same thing, that this thing's, they're going to settle in. And a month, two months later, they're like, "Yeah, this is still crazy bright." So, the other consideration, if we consider, whether, whatever it is, that what do we do about the hundred, essentially to put a shield on these, is a hundred fifty dollars. Do we put that on the resident? Do we put a contingency in there for shields? It is definitely something that I think is going to be an issue, because when...
Either one.
What's that?
Either one, just the forecast.
No, I think either one. And so, I think that, do we put a contingency in there for so many shields, or do we say, "Listen, if you want a shield, get together with your neighbors, and you pay the hundred fifty dollars." It's, it's, because it's going to be different.
That's a picture of one of the shields on Military Parkway. I mean, it is a hundred fifty dollar piece of metal straps on top.
How many, how many would we have to put up for? How many would we...
Well, the shields, you don't know. You know, it's one of those that, depending on the homeowners, and how they're impacted, or feel like they're impacted. I know personally, in my residence, I had put in some blackout lines, and I was gone, and it didn't even address with the city or anything. I think it was one of those that most, I shouldn't say most, but a lot of folks aren't willing to do that, and, "Hey, you should put a shield up here." And so I think that's going to be a potential issue, and we just need to figure that into whatever we do. Do we want a contingency for so many of those? Do we say, "We're going to do them," or we're saying, "We're not going to do them"? I think that's definitely something we need to...
So there's...
There's lights, right? I'm sorry, there's nine hundred lights, right?
There's eight hundred and sixteen Cobras. So, if we did half of that, that's sixty, sixty-one thousand dollars, if we would budget half.
The one fifty times seven.
Yeah.
Do I remember right that Duke actually made, has, does it make it on?
Yep.
How long does that last?
Forever.
Around?
Right. And I'll tell you, I mean, this, this light is outside my house that they replaced, and when it, when it installed them, you can clearly tell, there's a, there's a big difference. But I like it, I think, I think not only that, I'd like to, and this is a huge project, so I don't know if it's even possible, but I would like to take a look at if there's some areas that need to have less Cobra lights, because now that this is open, I know my last city, we had way too many lights in certain areas. So it would be good for us to drive around and kind of take a look, see if there's, actually we can reduce some of the Cobra heads, just because...
I think generically, I did speak with Mitch on this and that, and generically, he said, "There's probably more throughout the city, just, you know, as a whole. There's technically more that could be placed to meet kind of today's specific needs." Now, like, you're right, there certainly could be some that are grouped...
And I haven't seen any in Fort Thomas like that, but it's definitely something to pay attention to, if we're doing it.
So just a thought, so if we do nothing, we just stay on the current program? Nope, lights will go out. When a light goes out, do they automatically put an LED in?
Correct.
And that's, and they charge us?
Then we'll never know. So they don't charge us, they just charge us a lower rate per utility. So it's not, I'm sorry, they don't charge us to install it, they'll just, our utility rate on that light alone would be cheaper, when it happens.
Now, LED?
Correct.
But they have to sit, if you've got a traditional light out there, they're going to have to come and put the Cobra head on. So...
Which we don't pay for.
Which we don't pay for, so now we're paying for those upfront.
It's just for, it's just to save the utilities ahead of time, to start saving money, because after that eight and ten years, it's significantly lower, because they're not going to do all eight hundred and something in that short time.
Right, so the difference is, it's going to be done gradually, you're going to have a mix of LEDs and regular lights, but we don't pay for the hardware, like we are upfront, to have it all done at one time.
We're just paying for more utility, though. The balance of that is, we're paying more in utility costs.
Right, there's an offset of break-even.
Right, and I'm not sure what that precisely is, you know, but, in the meantime, while we're waiting, we're paying more utility costs, versus if we swap it over, then utility costs go and transfer. And we're just, we're kind of paying the same, if we, we can pay it upfront, or we can pay it over time, and then that kind of balances out after, like Matt said, eight to twelve years, depending on the different types of...
So you said that they already, they do, they automatically estimate the difference in cost per light, and that's how they adjust it, is that what you said?
Yep.
So, didn't it be, how, didn't it easier, didn't that easy, you had to figure out how much you would save over so much time?
Well, the problem is, you don't know when these are going to go out over time. It's over the next twenty, twenty-five years, and, you know, they still have spare parts. So some of them may actually go back with, you know, certain, certain products may actually go back with the old light, and you're not getting those savings. For the most part, they are going to be transferring those over to...
I meant, I'm sorry, I meant as in, when the return on investment will be. So, we pay a hundred dollars per month for a light, and they say, "Well, now it's going to be eighty dollars per month." That's twenty dollars per light, times nine hundred lights, right? So, when does that variable become a break-even point, when you start making money? That's kind, does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's the eight...
Eight to twelve years-ish. So, they're a little bit different, the post tops cost more, so, when we say eight to twelve years, it's kind of based on partially the post tops cost more, the Cobra heads are a little bit less. So over that period of time, you know, eight to twelve years is where you, you'll get your money back, if we just...
What is the cost order?
So, right now, the existing, the existing monthly bill is nine thousand five hundred. And the new bill, once we do this, will be six thousand.
Oh, so thirty-five hundred dollars a month, so forty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars a year, actually, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's the savings that, that we'll get by switching them all out now.
What's the difference in color and brightness compared to an old one and a new one? If you wait, are we going to have different...
I mean, that's, that's, this picture kind of shows that. So you see that kind of blue down the street, that's the old style, and the one closer is the LED, it's the new LED.
It's a 3K.
The 3K.
Isn't the old style the one closest to the light?
They say this is orange, I see it as clear. I mean, I see it every day in front of my house, I don't see an orange hue.
It's funny when you have them next, you don't see it when you have them next to each other.
Yeah.
These are, these lights are pretty similar, so that would be more of a 4K, and that would be more of a 3K. Because it's not, I went through this whole thing with my house, as I switched over, and I'm not a huge fan of the 4K, because it's a daylight light, and it doesn't make a huge difference when you're, when you're outside, and I like the warmth, I like the warmth of the 3K more. Unless it's specific in store, it makes sense to go 4K. In here, it makes sense to have a mixture, but I would like to see, if we're going to do it, I would like to see 3K throughout, because it gives off, it gives off plenty of light, even warmth.
I agree with that. It's 4K throughout, not even, not even on the main drags, on the 4K. It's a blue light.
It's a blueish light.
The blue is the 5K, which it'll offer. The white, white light is a 4K, orange, the orange is light. And my only thought process with our recommendation was, the, the main drags, in my personal opinion, the white light is a little classier looking. It just looks a little more crisp and classy to me, personally. That's why, that was part of my recommendation or discussion, for the main drags, but...
I think, I agree, it would gotten me, I agree with Jeff a little bit, but we get used to that yellow light, we've been in it our whole life, and now, because I have , could be used to it, I'm used to the white light, and I like it when I walk in there, and I did my house in the white light, but my view is a little different than the average person's, but I, I think that's why I like the white light, like what Kevin said, I think it is more crisp, it's a little bit more beagle, it's just, it's clean, it's clean, you know what I mean? It's just, it's a really clean look.
There's houses in the...
That's why Kroger's and Market Hall didn't do it, you know?
I was okay with doing this, something came up that I read just the other day, and I mentioned it to Matt yesterday. I guess, I'm leaning more now just to letting it go, because there, evidently, there's a big push for solar streetlights now, where the technology has gotten so good, I mean, solar energy is kind of, you know, some stuff is good, but there're literally streetlights that have the battery and the solar panel on it, and they use no electricity. And what I would hate to do is spend six hundred thousand dollars, or whatever this is, and then, two years from now, they come out and say, "Oh, you know what? We're going to switch to all this other stuff." And we went and spent all that money, and now we're not going to get the savings, because there's literally no electric charge to it at all.
I was just going to say the exact same thing, I don't know what I'm missing, but if we save about three thousand dollars a month, times twelve, thirty-six thousand dollars a year, this cost is going up significantly. So it's six hundred thirty-six thousand, if you do the math on that, it's a break-even of seventeen years. Far higher than what they're saying.
Yeah.
So, a lot can change with technology, is changing, you know, over seventeen years is a lifetime, right?
Well, and I didn't...
And then the other...
That's exactly what you're saying.
And I didn't realize, until he said it, and I probably just missed it earlier, that we're not benefiting from the cost savings of the LED electric. They're just charging us less, and guess what? They can decide they're going to charge us a little bit more next year. You know, if you've got regular lights, it's going to be this much, if you've got LEDs, it's going to be this much, and it can keep going like this, so that seventeen years now goes into twenty, twenty-two years.
The other, just for your number, and I, I really have no preference on doing this or not, the other number is for the post tops, we'll be saving a thousand dollars a month. Because it's, right now, it's fifteen hundred that we pay a month, so we'll be saving another thousand. So just, in your numbers.
Take off in two years. Well, I think so, because if you do the math on that, it's one ninety-five, but you have eighty-three post tops, like Mitch says, that's twenty-four hundred dollars in equipment per light, for the post top.
So...
Is there any buybacks, or are you, you've been told that these are used to be?
This is, this is the, the...
This is a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, right, right. So, yeah, I don't want to talk anymore about like types, but I do want to see, what does council want to do, move forward? I don't want to talk about this again. Like, if council wants to move forward, then we move forward. If they don't, then I could tell Duke, "Don't, you know, don't talk to us anymore."
Is there any other way to negotiate it down?
I can answer.
All right, so one thing, he mentioned in the, he mentioned there's a component to the light that was previously twenty-five dollars, that went to one seventy-five, that allows them to monitor the light, tell them when it is out, so they can come and do some sort of, you know, maybe one, two, five. That's, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars per light, just this one component, that they've added in, over all those lights, in case, you know, you're talking a hundred fifty thousand dollars, or something like that. If we, I don't think we have that now, that technology. You know, if we didn't do that, that brings it down one fifty, I don't know if there's anything else you can do, bring the cost down. I mean, obviously, the further you bring the cost down, the sooner the break-even, and then maybe at some point it makes sense, but I, my opinion is, as it stands now, I would not be in favor of spending the money.
Is any, or anybody on council in favor of spending the money now, and moving forward?
It would seem like it, once he threw those numbers out there.
I will ask, like I said, this is all really just, I want to present to council, and I want to, this is a decision I didn't want to make on my own, just because...
We can turn around, Mark.
But I'll go ahead and ask, and just see, I'll send you the numbers, if it's for you, if you think it's worth talking about again, we will, if not, then we'll just end it, if that's what you...
Yeah, I would, just right, again, just to make sure, I mean, they're giving us different break-even numbers than what the math suggests, so, just see if we're missing something there.
Okay.
If that's correct.
You know, at a certain point, we can reevaluate it, too, if the lights changed, and we noticed that it's just not an attractive student's aim.
And the reason they're bringing this up now is Duke was purchased in the last year or so, from another company down south, that they don't like this program, that they're offering anymore, because I guess they're not making money on it, or something. So, that's kind of why this has been the last push, that this is probably going to go away, so...
Their problem is, is they're replacing them all.
Yeah, possibly.
It's certain energy, too, right? Every time they do these, they get more back.
Okay, that's good. The next thing I want to talk about is the Midway, part of Public Works Committee, would be the Midway Streetscape Discussion. I do have that in front of you. I have a, the engineer estimate packet, that's got numbers on it, like a spreadsheet, and then I have the eleven-by-seventeen drawings. The estimate came in after we, council approved us to do the engineer estimates, or the analysis, and it came back at three point eight million. And what that is, that's from Garrison, just a reminder, it's from Garrison to Grandview. If you look at those papers, that shows you where we're, what the scope is. The biggest cost of this is the one point two five, to underground all the electrical. This is higher than we originally discussed, and the reason is, the original discussion was to put the paper band in the middle of the road, like we have in the other Midway districts. However, we've changed that on this design, and making the sidewalks much larger, and actually using the sidewalks to reduce the width of the road, for that as the traffic calming. Because everybody that drives through it, if you notice or not, the lanes are huge, because you've got parking in the center line, and it's a very large lane. So if you look at those drawings, it would drastically change the look of that area, so I want you to see, you know, the sidewalk's coming down. It's going to drastically improve pedestrian travel, because you're going to have much larger sidewalks. It's definitely going to slow vehicles down, because it's going to pinch that area, so they're not going to, not going to travel as fast, because they are tighter with that. So we've added twice the concrete than the original concept that we discussed. We've also had bump, added bump outs, added paper sidewalks that weren't on there before, and we actually added a sidewalk across from Shawnee to Grandview, because people that are down there by the post, and South Side, people cross there all the time, and there isn't a sidewalk. So we've also added bump outs, to restrict that down farther, and a crosswalk there. So, again, this is just, before we move farther, wanted to have council take a look at this, see if this is something that we're interested in.
It's easy to do.
Sure.
Basically, you're talking two blocks.
Yeah, about two, three blocks.
Is there a reason why you don't want to redo the road?
It's already done.
It's already done, okay. I was thinking, I was...
So the top of Garrison is where, we still have electric, at the top of Garrison. So, we've, this plan is to underground electric from Garrison all the way up past Brentwood. So Brentwood, Brentwood, Grandview there.
I'm just, so this, you're talking about redoing the streetscape here, and then burying the power lines, right here to...
From Garrison all the way up to Brentwood. And it'll actually be a little past Brentwood, because if you're, if you're traveling towards Woodville, there's that bend in the avenue. So I didn't want to stop at Grandview because there's a pole, there's a pole or two right past that. And if we underground those as well, it gives you that clean look. Because when you go down Grandview, it'll look like the whole area is underground. So we did extend it a little bit just because of aesthetics.
And this, it's buried all the way from Midway already?
Yes.
To where?
To Garrison. And then the first pole picks up at Garrison.
I'm not saying we want to do it, but what's, do you know, do we know what the incremental cost is to extend that further? Let's say you went on down to Woodville.
It's a lot. I've looked at that, I just don't see the value myself. But it would probably be another one point two million. Because it's, because every, because every time you pull a pole under water or a pole underground and the water is underground, then you got the underground to all the houses, all the businesses. So that's kind of why it does that. I mean, I would think that would be great to do. But most of the traffic, I think, comes up Grandview into the town as opposed to that way.
It would look nice with the, it's always at what it costs.
Yeah, and that's always something we can add in to get a better, that's something council wants, but I just wanted to.
Isn't that like a million, like a block, basically? I would, I prefer that number.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Sounds about right.
There's a difference between what the poles look like here in the center of town, going down the very little town, then down that end. Because I'm sitting here trying to think, I don't even recall seeing the lines down there because they're off to the side. So, to me, it was a big issue, right, in the center of town, or did that twenty years ago, whatever it was. And I felt like it's a good thing. I'm not so sure it's that important down there. And I guess another option would be, let's clean up and redo the sidewalks, but don't bother with putting utilities in there.
Can you go to one side of the street, not the other? Because I do feel like it's not great on the, like, I remember walking by like the post and all that. And it's not like kind of right in the middle of the sidewalk.
Right, and that's the biggest, biggest issue that there's that one right before the post, right in front of the dental place, is there's not a sidewalk where you can walk through. I mean, it's barely wide enough for bike candles, definitely not wide enough for strollers, which means you have to go into the parking lot of the dental place or into the street. So those are the areas. And then actually, at that point is where it crosses over and that's the power, that's the line that gets hit all the time by semis and things that gets pulled down. Not all the time, a couple times a year.
So is this, I see up there it says twenty existing parking space. I'm assuming the parking space is twenty-five, so it's not able to move in the parking?
Yep. Yeah, we want to make sure that the bump outs and the increased sidewalk wasn't removing any parking. So that was just annotated there to make sure everybody knew that that was the deal.
I love the idea of having every wired area in town, but that's a lot of money to do that.
It is. And we could, you know, instead of, so we have a couple options even moving forward from here if we do want to continue to underground. We can go back to the original design where we're keeping the same sidewalks, okay? That'll probably save us, you know, close to two million dollars. So we'll probably be closer to two million, two point five million to underground. Replace the sidewalks of the existing and do a little bit less landscaping and paper banding. So that would get us a little bit less. And then possibly, I still think we need to figure out a way for some traffic calming. And that might just be striping it, you know, putting the white lines on the sides of the road. That way you would keep vehicles down. So definitely, there's definitely some options that we don't want to go as, you know, as, as large as what's in front of you, if that's something council's not interested in. So, yeah, so we can either, you know, move forward with the design that you're looking at. We can go back to the original design and get a price on just undergrounding with improved sidewalks. We can do a combination of them all or nothing.
I like the idea of a combination of maybe trimming some of the streetscape, but putting the electric underground like Eric, like you guys did twenty years ago. I think that added more to the, than anything. Because, you know, it's easy to forget that it's not there when it's not there. But doing that here before you do any work at all means it's underground. And you're not tearing, in the future, you're not tearing anything up. And underground.
Okay.
Yeah, but my point was visually in the center of town, yes, you definitely saw it every time. Here, I don't see it that much because to the main part of Midway, that's been taken care of. Actually, I'm on the map right now on people's street maps to see, oh yeah, there is a pole there. I don't notice this as much. So I think we all drive through there and try to take a look and say, is it worth? Is it that much of an obstruction? Because that's the major part of the cost of this. But I also agree that if we're going to do it, we should do it before we do the streetscape. But if we all go through there and say, you know what? Those lines aren't that bad. If we fix up the sidewalks and do all this other stuff, it'll look great. And, and let the, let the three poles that are visible there.
Can we move those three poles? Or do they have to stay where they are? Can you move them, you know, slightly to make it more manageable?
I made a move.
I'm just saying, I know that one's a problem.
I, I like the suggestion of walking through there. Those poles are eyesore. And I think with the amount of money we're investing in Tower Park, the trail system now, the bike trails, the soccer field, the complex, and what this is going to draw into Midway. This, Jake, you know, I mean, we do make sure, you know, always been a big fan of, we want the infrastructure to support the businesses that are there. So it's something that we need to get ahead of this because we are going to draw on traffic. We're going to do, redo the tennis courts, you know, the mess hall is a big draw, the parks are a big draw, so.
Okay.
The track, it's attractive to me though. Where would the, that area, you can come somewhere.
So let me do this. Let me go back to Frank. Let me try to go back more towards the original design with the underground. Once I can get the number probably closer to like two point five million. And then I can set up a time to where we can all kind of meet out, out there and we can talk through it for, you know, twenty, thirty minutes. Does that sound reasonable? And that way we can kind of vet some of your ideas so you can see what we're looking at and, and move from there. We're not on any timeline here.
Maybe just trim some of the streets. Because a lot of the streetscape, I think, they have to.
Okay.
I'll offer those calls, problems with the heavy, you know, tech stuff, maybe they get hit every once in a while.
The wires? Yeah, about once, twice a year. At least three times about been here, I know.
Oh, really?
It's not.
It's not. I mean, it's not cost us other than PD having shut the road down until the wires get moved and all that. But no, it's, it's all utilities.
So with the, one question just about the design. When you look at, will this stoppage coming out on the, on the corner of South Port Thomas and Grandview, there's a lot of semis, because this is the state can't come up like, without aid, they come up, they're coming down Grandview. Does this affect the per radius of those trucks?
It does not. I'm actually, that is one area I've asked him to look at again. I want to improve that intersection because it's still, the way it's designed, it's still really challenging when you're coming off Grandview for safety wise. I'm trying to either move, move that stop bar up closer so the visual, because the biggest challenge in that intersection is a, it can be a dangerous intersection, is when you have somebody going straight towards Woodville at the stop sign and you have Juan turning right and then you have a car coming off Grand, coming towards Tower Park. You, that car on the left can't see that car. So I'm trying to get them to adjust that a little bit, just to make that visual. Because if we're going to do anything in that intersection, let's improve the safety of the intersection if we can. That and the way Brentwood lines up, a lot of times you pull, when you pull up to that stop bar, you're actually angling like you're going towards Tower, even though you may be going towards Woodville. So it's kind of confusing to everybody else. So that's one area of kind of, I want to take a look at that intersection. If we're going to improve stuff, let's, let's do a twenty to be your fix.
But like a roundabout, one, two, three, four?
No, and that's elevation.
I'm just saying, because there, sometimes you go up through here and there's just twenty cars running down.
I still like the one high on Grand.
Yeah.
Now, this is the big change. Is there any proposed development or reasonable look at this other than just upgrade it? Is there a reason, or is there a benefit to going from South U to Grand U? In my eyes, from, from the Midway section, pub section and Christian Science section and the Chinese restaurant, and then boom, I'm through. I want to make sure I can talk about this.
Yeah.
That, that is definitely my biggest concern there. I've sat out, I know that for a student many, many, many times, and those cars, they're coming within twelve inches of each other. So that, to me, would be primary, number one, fixing that area right there, traffic calming, whatever, whatever we need to do to improve that. And that sidewalk seems like it's, that area seems like it's the most pedestrian use other than from the post. But going down to South Side and all the way down to Grandview, I don't necessarily know if there's need for expansion of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Or even putting like brick papers on, I'm not sure what's going on. The section where the Midway is located, that would be primary objective for widening sidewalk, making that safer.
Yeah, we can. And during, actually, like, you're talking about by the pub, Midway. Yeah, that's already been done. And if we expand that, it would take up parking.
Well, then, yeah, don't withstand it. Do whatever we need to do up in that section to make sure that, if that gets a lot, a lot of outside use for the rest of the, the post really doesn't get a whole lot outside.
You mean the north side of the avenue?
Yeah.
Now, because they, you know what, I do it too. I walk up there, then I walk up to the, I walk up to River Road and then do the crosswalk there and come across. So I do my.
Yeah, so just, I don't want to get into it too deep, but I do have a plan on that that I would like to add wrought iron railings in front of the pub, in front of Midway, just to, just to give that. The problem is, if we do that, I have to actually stop cars. So I'm kind of stuck right now and I want it to, I want it to just keep pedestrians on and it'll look really nice. It'll just have that, it'll have a really crisp look there. But I can't just put up a regular fence. It's got to, it's got to have bollards that are going to actually stop a vehicle because of federal regulations.
You got to be careful. People knock the street everywhere up there, so not just run in a wall they can't get over.
The other thing is that it would keep them from crossing everywhere. It would limit more, which is another edit there. But, and I'll, I'll bring that here in the next year or so, I'm sure.
If you give me any more thought, I know, talked about this before, but that section, or all the way down, maybe it stand out as a, this is a busy area and what's eliminated a little bit different but putting those lights over top, have you thought about that?
We've thought about that. The state said no, that we're looking at other, we're looking at other options.
We can put them up immediately.
The state says, the state says no, a lot.
Yeah. But now that we have electric there, so it might change, but that's definitely something we're, we're still looking at.
Good art, like a wrought iron arch, Midway district.
That is a definite no-go from the state, but, yeah.
I like that.
It would be nice.
I thought that was going to be great in the middle of town too, or one island is going up one island.
I, I could see a minimal, the most minimal thing you could do, go join those wires and just do, punch out the sidewalk on basically the southeast side between Garrison and Shawnee. Because that's where the sidewalk is the toughest. And the other side of the street is basically a big ramp into a parking lot, so we don't even bother with that side. Just do that side, we can probably do that very inexpensively. And I just have to, as you guys drive through there, kind of take a look at that concept. Because that's the worst thing, right? Walking from Garrison to the post, you know, you've got that real narrow space. We just, there's a sidewalk out into the road and then shift the center line of the road over to the other side and we don't see anything on that. Consider that as.
I think it'd be a, it'd be a, it'd be a suggestion. Yeah, yeah. Well, it's me up there and I'll get, I'll do that.
We'll do that.
Do you want to do a brief, a brief summary?
No, I'll just go ahead and do it.
Do you need an engineer to do this?
Yes, I'll have Frank there. We did that as a staff already before we started the project, but I want to get a couple.
Anything to talk about or?
A couple more options.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to get a couple more options before we do that, so. All right, I think I've got my guidance on that. The next thing is Public Works Staff in Discussion. I know I've talked to, still Public Works, yeah, still Public Works Committee. I've talked to Adam about this before, about adding green space employees. So that's just one thing I wanted to discuss with council. I think it's time, especially with the addition of Tower Park and the landscaping that's inside of that, and just maintaining our current landscaping. And our focus has been on improving the beautification of overall town. I think it's time for us to add two green space employees. So that's, that's something I want to talk about here. The salary benefits for two of those employees is a hundred and thirty-six thousand. If council approves, I don't want to wait until July first because by that time we get hired, they're going to be trained up and ready for winter. I prefer to do an advertisement in January, hire by March. And that way that they're ready for the spring to add in. So I want to kind of see what council's opinion is. I think we're overdue for adding more Public Works personnel with all of our green space that we have. And it's a struggle to do everything that we do, even, even though we've kind of pulled them back from a lot of the street program. But I think we've had a pretty good impact this year because of that, through town and improving things. And I think adding the green space employees to be able to cover more of the landscape and areas in town is going to be a big impact for the city.
How many were you talking, did I miss that?
Two.
About roughly a hundred and twenty thousand. I was just saying, I think the Public Works Staff does a great job, but I think we've all heard some complaints over the last few years just about periodic vacancies and whether it's weeding certain areas, mulching. If this helps to improve that and can keep us on a regimental schedule, I think that's a success.
Yeah, so the, the plan is for, if we do hire the two, the four, the four that we have?
Current four.
Currently have four, is want to send them to allow the, the training for, shoot, what's the word?
Harbor related?
It's kind, yeah, it's kind of an arbiters related stuff. We're going to try to get them a little bit more trained up and get into a rotation where each one of them is assigned, you know, landscaping for a week. So they're the ones that checks all the landscaping. We started looking through of having one dedicated person. But yeah, we have one dedicated person, they see the same thing over and over. Sometimes they miss it. And it just gives a little bit more qualifications to the people that we have. And that always is a value added for employees when they have a little bit more training. So this will allow us to dedicate, you know, either one or two people in the spring and summer to really focus on the landscape that's, because with a, sometimes we just don't, you know, I get a report of it and I'm like, yeah, I know that's, that's bad, but I just don't have the manpower to, to go and knock it out this week. And it's, it definitely annoys us to be, to have to say that, but we're just limited on, depending on what's going on at the time. So.
We have four Public Works, that's it?
We have four green space.
Four greens.
So we have ten Public Works, that they, you know, they're, they're doing the concrete and stuff like that and, and the piloting. But green space fills in and does concrete with them. They do piloting too. They're just, you know, less expensive on it.
I mean, I think, I've been held it, I mean, I hear about that the most. I've been part of on that for a few years now. I think because we've done so many projects, when I first started on council, when you pull in the concrete away from them, it'll offset the cost and adding more. So you can already see the difference with adding two more people, they had a lot of value to our city. You know, you hear everybody say, you know, you hear everybody talk about our city, what they want to protect and why they value it. I think it's a great addition, unfortunately. So I think, I think.
Any council have concerns with doing that? So my plan would be either next week, probably just next week, I'd ask for a budget amendment of fifty-seven thousand. And what that'll do is it'll give me salary benefits for five months. So that'll allow me to bid out in January. I don't want to bid out any before that, but not bid out, post a position in January and have them hired in here by the first of March. This, that much money will give me an opportunity to go ahead and do it in February if we can get them in earlier. But I want to get them, you know, trained up by that time. It's a perfect time of the year to get them trained up. And then once spring hits, they can just rock. And two, employees will be another, you know, it'll be another grass cutting team that can go out together. So it'll, it'll have a much bigger impact than one person. One person kind of throws things off, but when we have the two, I think it's going to make a big impact. Any other questions about that? I appreciate that.
So are you going to outsource like the grass kind of stuff?
Yeah, we've looked, yeah, we've looked at that. I looked at it when I got here, it was looked at before. And it's just, it's not, I mean, you definitely lose the ability to get, you know, things immediately. When we know we have a park event, we can send them out that day because we, if you have them contracted, then it has to work in their schedule. But even financially, not yet. It's something I'll continue to look at every couple of years, but it's, it's not. And the final thing is a promoted, is a pretty simple parking ordinance amendment. The reason this has come up, we've, we've had a neighbor that.
I'm sorry, I've got a little bit of a bit of.
But I tried that.
See the parking, I don't have any issue with there already.
Sorry, I'm running late. I was trying to get in time.
Very, very close.
So this is, this is something that was brought up the last month or two. Our ordinance actually says you can't have a three-quarter ton or larger truck on the street, which is pretty common nowadays to have just a regular pickup truck that happens to get three-quarter. So we were asked by residents to enforce this. Obviously, that's a challenge when you have suburbans that have three-quarter tons at this point. So we were wanting to remove the three-quarter ton capacity and define it as no oversized vehicles on the street. I also have this in front of you if you want to look at it too. And then we've defined, okay, sorry. So we're, we're making the rule change that just says no oversized vehicles on the city street. This does not prohibit commercial oversized vehicles that are doing regular deliveries or any service calls. So if you have any of that, they can be out there at whatever time it takes to make the delivery or the service call. So it doesn't prohibit that. But it does prohibit any oversized vehicle that's longer than twenty feet, it's wider than seven feet or taller than eight feet. And this definition does not include pickup trucks or SUVs if they're less than twenty-five feet. So what this does, it incorporates all, all pickup trucks and SUVs that are typically purchased from the dealership, right? So it's not going to prohibit any of those vehicles because they're not, they're not oversized, even if they're dimensionally different. But what it will do is it'll prevent some of the larger vehicles to be out there. And it gives the PD something very clear definition of what's allowed, what's not. You know, some other ordinances go gross weight and things like that. You really don't know the gross weight, even around the VIN number sometimes, and it's just harder to enforce. But if you have a tape measure and you can enforce this, then, for example, a small dump truck wouldn't, would be classified as an oversized vehicle, right, just because of the width. But all the other vehicles would not. Most standard trucks are less than seven feet wide, except for duly pickup trucks, those are larger. But if it's a standard pickup truck, we're going to be classified as a pickup truck that you can purchase. But anything else that will fit in this criteria. Will Kevin and I have looked at this throughout the city, we've measured vehicles on the street just to make sure that when we look at something to say, this, this shouldn't be here, let's make sure it falls into this. If it should be here, let's measure that just to make sure that it doesn't exclude it because of, because of it being a larger pickup truck. So that's, that's our recommendation for, to put on the agenda for next council. Again, these are just, I've got a list of ordinances over, you know, over the next year or two. I just want to start updating. It's probably haven't updated since the seventies.
With this, vehicles, it restrict people who drive, that work vehicles on like, as in, you know, plumbers or electricians?
As long as they're standard plumber, electrician vehicles, then no. But if it's all, if it's somebody that. As long as they're standard plumber, electrician vehicles, then no. But if it's all, if it's somebody that, that has a take home dump truck, yes.
What about like racks on top of the car?
No.
I don't want to let, you know, there's a lot of those people out here and it's, it's a great bonus to them. I don't want to take anybody, you know.
And we discussed that before. And that's one thing we wanted to make sure, you know, when, when an HVAC, um, person is here, that they should be able to park that as long as it's not humongous and intrusive. And they're not. And we get those complaints, right? You, you got this complaint that that person shouldn't be there. Well, it's allowed. It's not.
I mean, obviously this is illegal for doing work and stuff in places.
Correct. Yep. Even the larger ones, they can, you know, even a dump truck, if they're doing landscaping, that they're cutting grass, but they have a dump truck, they're allowed to be there, uh, in the actual time it takes to, to complete their service. So it doesn't.
About like the mobile dump, like the, it's like the.
The trailers?
Yeah.
You like the, you, oh, you like that.
The, the trailers are under our trailer that they can't be there for more than 48 hours. And they have to be there for the purpose of loading and unloading.
And like pause and all that too.
That's, that's zoning.
Yeah, I think you're, what do you, what do those cars do?
Garbage. They roll them?
Yeah, I think we have to get permits for that.
Yes.
Yeah, they got to get a permit.
What was the, the reasoning by, uh, candidate made of the limit to the big job?
Adding a day?
Was it 24 hours? Now it's 48?
No, it's always been 48. I thought it was 24 too, until I looked it up. It's 48.
I just don't want to take anybody's ability to bring a work vehicle home. You know what I mean?
Yeah. And this is another one, just like every ordinance we do. Once we change it, if we see there's issues that, hey, this is capturing something, we'll, we'll always come back. But I mean, the three of us have been, I think, pretty thorough on, on driving around town, making sure the things that should, should be allowed, shouldn't be allowed, um, fall, fall under here.
So this, the 24 is a type O on here?
Let me see what we're looking at. I'm sorry.
You see 24 right there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Where we, where we lined it out?
Yeah. That's what we're changing, correct? Does it happen currently yet?
Oh, more than 24 hours.
Correct.
Oh, we are.
We still have a 24 hour no parking ordinance that's separate. But that one was just specific to.
To the over.
The, the over.
B is already in there. If you look at the section B, the 48 hours, that's already there for, that's.
That's for trailers.
That's more.
That's new, right?
No, that's, the trailer thing is there.
That's currently.
I just thought it was in there because it's the full section. I'll double check on the 24 hour because if that, if that isn't somewhere else, we definitely need to keep that. But I'm pretty sure that's somewhere else.
The underline is.
Correct. Yeah, the strike through is what we're removing. That's currently the ordinance. And the underline is what we're adding. Instead of adding and, and Tim, I haven't had you take a look at this yet, but instead of adding a definitions category for just one definition, we just added it as a B, just a, and because it's, it's better that way anyway if you don't have other definitions, I think, because you can get it all in that one section without having citizens to have to reference multiple things. So that's why we did it that way. But I wanted you to take a look at it before we. So, uh, if council doesn't have any issues with that, I'll have final gap to, to you after Tim takes a look at it, um, and, and we'll go from there.
I want to circle back to a couple things real quick.
Okay.
They're, they're small. Um, one, and we talked about pickleball courts. Um, we thought about putting any kind of like just stadium seating there, like two or, you know, like two or, instead of just one single bench, like some little people can sit behind people.
We, we, we were just looking at the benches. So we talked about a pickleball, um, people that say your benches were acceptable to them. I think it looks better.
Okay, I, I do too. I just didn't know how if we're waiting here or not, what, I get that. And then the softball fence, I know we had talked about that briefly. You had been talking to somebody down there and, uh, uh, and also we never, I don't think we ever did a ribbon cutting for the pickleball courts. Should we go do ribbon cutting for that?
Uh, I don't know.
And the softball fence, um, we talked to people down there. I don't, I think you guys, I brought this up, Mayor Hawes brought this up a year ago.
Yeah, we're waiting on one more bid.
So, all right.
What is the symbol in front of 72.25?
I'm gonna let Tim earn his keep.
He has to look at it.
I haven't even seen it.
The S, looks like two S's are popping each other.
Supposed to be that's.
State statue?
For section.
It's a fancy. Right. He gets, he gets $10. $10 every song he uses.
Just got to build the city. Schneider, it's the symbol.
He's exactly.
Any other, any questions?
Yeah, one last thing on the LED thing when you're, when you're talking to them. So, yeah, I was just doing the math on that again. So it's really expensive to do the, the lamppost. So I'm wondering if, you know, if we did find a way to lower the cost on the traditional lighting and consider that. Could we break those two apart? Could we leave the lamppost as they are? It's really expensive. We can do the street lights?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can just do the 441 to just do the cover lights. Is that, that's what you're saying, right? Just do cover lights?
Right. So that component I talked about, maybe if that, you know, I don't know, if that came out, that's $140,000 right off the, what, 440, so I had 300. I don't know if we can.
That were the biggest savings would be too, right?
Right. You know, you know, if we got a little bit of a discount somehow, I mean, we could conceivably be below 300,000 for the lights.
Well, if you take that timer thing or the monitor thing off too.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah. So you're 440 now for just the lights, not the lamppost.
Okay.
Right? You take out 140 for that, that's 300. I don't know if we can get some sort of, you could be under 300,000 and do the lights and leave the lamppost, which are 2,400 a piece based on that. Compared to 500 for those.
Yeah, I'll get that. I'll just send it to you to crunch the numbers and we'll.
When they replace the lights, as we talked about the other year, they just replace the fixture. They don't replace the post at the same time, do they anyways? So they would be leaving the post.
I don't know when, but I mean, in front of my house, they didn't replace the, the post. It was just a new head. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Your attorney.
Thank you.